All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask to start with this Pledge of Allegiance this morning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. I can ask for approval of today's agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Oh, second.
I have a motion of second and discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, I have consideration of the minutes dated June 2nd, 2021.
I'll move to approve minutes.
Second.
I have a motion of second and discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, I have this consideration of claims for payment dated June 16th, 2021.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion of second and the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Emergency management director Creighton isn't here yet, so when he arrives, we will get to him. Next, I have a secondary roads and utility permits. I have one utility permit, UT-21-010.
Make a motion to approve the utility permit application, UT-21-010 for Iowa Regional Utilities Association.
Oh, second.
I have a motion of second and discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Taylor?
Yep, so our S-27 bridge, the Twin Buck End Ranklet is completed, it's open, painted, it's nice. Good to have it be a little wider than it used to be. It used to just be one of those where it's just about the width of the road and you're kind of hugging your car, even though it doesn't really do anything. You know the feeling. But, and then our Hubbard asphalt job got started over the Wednesday, it should have been Wednesday afternoon, and all the Hubbard people were worried because it was Hubbard days, but they were long gone before the Hubbard days started and, yep, and they should be back today with the different subcontractors, keep moving on that.
Okay, thank you, Taylor.
You bet.
Thomas, you wanna take the floor?
Sure.
Good morning.
Good morning. Sorry, I'm late.
You're all right.
So what I was doing actually is Rocky from Public Health was in, and we got all the communities set up on the new alert system. So as people start to sign up for the new mass notification system, they can sign up for their community. And then they will be signed in for any alert that that community sends out as boil orders or civil disturbance within the community or anything like that. So those communities have been set up and we tested it and it works. So that's done. Everybody will be receiving, sorry, a postcard.
You must have run up.
I did. I was like, one night. Everybody will be receiving a postcard in the mail through the COVID funds that Public Health had and using this alert system for the COVID and vaccine information and things like that. Public Health has paid for it. And so everybody will get a postcard from the post office, every postal box, every business, everybody gets a postcard to sign up for the system. So hopefully that's a push that will get a lot of people sign in. The next thing is the burn ban and just a clarification on the burn ban. The burn ban does not prohibit fireworks. That is a local jurisdiction. And or the county board supervisors can decide as they give permits out whether those are allowed or not. That's, it's not part of the burn ban. So that burn ban has, doesn't affect the fireworks. The one thing I would say to that is I'm, I appreciate people wanting to celebrate the Fourth, but please be very careful with fireworks. It is so dry that one of the fires the other day was started by a county mower and just picking up a rock while they were mowing along a gravel road and making a spark in the ditch in the dry grass. So it doesn't take much to get a fire going at this dry weather. Just got off the phone with the Eldora Fire Chief and there is concern about it. And they have a couple of the city of Eldora, they're gonna do the same thing. It's gonna be a discussion about what, what is around that area when they say they're gonna burn, do the fireworks, what's around it and what's the potential for a major catastrophe with those. So, I think that's all we've got. We did get our, we did get some of the money back from COVID. Just got that checked in the mail yesterday. So some of that money is starting to flow back into the county on the stuff that we spend.
Just to point out, our fireworks permits do say unless you're in a burn ban.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we added that a few years back. Okay, then that, yeah. As long as it says on the permit, unless you're in burn ban, then that pretty much answers that question.
So if you are, if your area is under burn ban on the planned date of your fireworks display, this permit is void.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I can say that, that'd be bullet.
And, and one of the things I think is important while we're talking about, we have a fireworks permit application today, is that also item number 13, will the operator and permitee be covered by insurance for their fireworks display? You know, the use of the fireworks available at your local retail outlet. Not everybody that goes and purchases those will be required to have such application and nor the insurance necessarily. So if somebody going out and lighting off a few sparklers and leaving them and start a small grass fire that burned somebody's barn down, nobody's typically insured for those type of liability issues. So at some point, there has to be that responsibility on the part of the consumer as well. So it makes me really nervous and I know Thomas and I had this discussion yesterday that as much as I appreciate celebrating the Fourth of July and Independence Day, I'm just not sure what expense to my neighbors or other people I would be willing to risk that at this point. I'm hoping that with this, that everybody will go wash their car and everything and that it'll rain, you know, an inch every day for the next week. But until then, use extreme caution. And I know there's other groups that depend on the fireworks sales to help with charitable organizations and I don't wish any ill will on them either with due to lack of sales, but we just need to be very careful with this right now.
Yeah, in fact, in addition to that, I would suggest if you're gonna do much of fireworks, you probably want to check with your homeowner's insurance.
Absolutely.
Sure, yes.
Yep. Anything else for Thomas on that? I'd like to thank you for your help yesterday. Appreciate that. All right, next thing I have is Economic Development Update, Angela De La Riva.
So I know you guys all get my monthly reports, so I'm just gonna run through top five, six projects, kind of give an update. So our CDPG, so Community Development Block Grant we have going in Ackley is almost finished. We've been able to do seven houses with that. So what that is, it's money from, sorry, Region Six. It gives up to $24,999 to homeowners who fix up their house, whether that be roof, whether that be small infrastructure things, whatever it may be. Get the study, get the target area, all sorts, all sorts of things going to it. However, the cool part is we get to help people with their houses. So we've been able to do seven houses at this point. So very minimal money left in there. I think we had around $206,000 to start out with. Our Brownfields grant that was supposed to be countywide, we weren't awarded it this year. However, there was like 582 applicants throughout the country and they awarded 50. So I'm not super discouraged by that because we sat down, we had a debrief with the federal Brownfields people. They pointed out the two or three spots in our application that worked up to wherever it needed to be. They told us we were number like 54 on the list, so we were really, really close. We missed it by two points. So really not set by that, discouraged by that. So the consultants and I went back, fixed the application, picked some different spots in the county that maybe fit the application a little bit better. Rewriting it, so that's ready to go when they open that, probably in September. The Come and Go Building in Ackley, still for sale, so if you know anyone who wants it, we're trying really hard to get that sold. We went ahead and the Ackley Development Commission paid for an inspection just so we know actually what we do have to fix once we get in there. Wasn't a huge surprise what we found, but it wasn't great either. So working with a potential business to go in there now, which ties into my FT 2021 project, that really involves shifting retail, shifting assets and trying to expand at a different location. So trying to get that moved forward. That has something to do with food industry, that's really all I can say about it. Our Project 2021, Project 2021, it's finally starting to get some teeth. That's more of an infrastructure project, more of a all hands on deck from city, state and federal level. So working on that, starting to get some nod of agreement versus heels in the sand. So we're really excited about being that one moved forward. And then obviously you guys know about the ATV UTV project we're working on, ordinance we're working on. I've gotten a lot of feedback since our meeting two, three weeks ago now over what people wanted it, what people don't want in it. And so thinking I have the correct direction moving forward, I just want your guys' feedback on it and then we can hopefully get that going here in the next couple of weeks before summer really gets kicked off. But yeah, that's what I have. I don't know if any questions popped up.
On the ATV, just on the ATV UTV ordinance, just to clarify, there's some miscommunication, but Steamboat Rock and Mayor Sterns is, they're definitely on board. So initially it had been reported that they weren't. It just needs to be clarified that they are definitely on board and see the, the big potential there.
Yeah, I think his hang up was noise concerns, right? He just didn't want noise concerns and wanted some protections for the trails going through there.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions, comments, concerns? You guys are pretty good at getting hold of me if you want to do something, so.
All right.
Continue to do that, I guess, I don't know.
Thank you.
Okay, Mark, you're up to bat.
How are you?
How are you this morning?
Reasonably well.
Good.
So trying to give you an update since last month. You know, last month I did speak about a party that we had interested in spec building. They did come back for a second visit. And since then, we've had two more inquiries. Obviously with the availability of construction materials and the price of construction materials, our building becomes much more desirable every day. So I've had quite a bit of activity. We did have a prospect that, I think I spoke about this last month, that's looking at bringing a manufacturing plant to Iowa Falls, was back for a second visit. So we, we toured them and answered their questions again and sent them a proposal for them to consider. So this would, if it happens, would be a creation of about 20 jobs over the next three years. So a nice size, very doable type of operation. I am working with Iowa Economic Development Authority on a co-op marketing piece that would highlight our spec building, even though we have all this interest. When you, when you sign up for these things, you sign up for them six, eight months in advance. It was right after we had worked for six months with a company that decided not to buy the spec building. I said, okay, we're gonna market this thing heavily. Well, in the last three months, we've had a lot of interest, so. Project Beef Jerky found financing and has moved forward. So I know that was a question last time, what is that? It's a new locker that Rocky Damiano was building in Iowa Falls. So we're working with them and trying to see that thing through. So be a nice, exciting business that would be located in Iowa Falls, but would serve the entire region.
Yeah, with the, with the new legislation, the
We're, we're looking into that and, you know, I, I don't know, you know, because all those, so that, that'll actually officially, well, officially become law by the end of the month. And so then they've got to write the rules and everything else. So he's on a fast track to get this thing up and running by this fall. I don't know, that's, he's very aggressive on his timeline. So we'll see whether to be able to tap into that or not.
Good.
Well, as you know by now, Plent Hills Resources has sold their ethanol plant to Poet. I've talked with the plant manager. Locally really doesn't expect any changes, any changes in jobs or anything like that. Seems, seems to think that things are going to continue to operate pretty much as they will. Obviously, at higher levels, Poet management will be integrated into there and, you know, there may be some shedding of jobs at the upper levels within Plent Hills, but don't really know much about it yet. I did have a project inquiry from Iowa Economic Development Authority that was interested in our certified site in rail. We had a project manager come up and review the site with us. And then actually just Monday, we had a team's virtual visit with the company, that they reviewed the rail layout. You know, we seemed to pass that test. It's kind of like in site selection, it's really a process of elimination. And they look at each thing and if they find a fatal flaw, you're done, you're out. So we passed that test. So on to the next hurdle. So we'll see. It's still a long way to go before we would, would get that. Great project, significant investment, some good jobs, good paying jobs that would be created by it. So we, it's a great project to be working on, but like I said, we've got a long way to go. I did have a second inquiry from Iowa Economic Development Authority on another project that had some interest in rail. We represented our Commercial Street site to them. This though was a company we don't know anything about. They were represented by JLL. Real Estate of Minneapolis is doing their site selection for them. They're looking at a number of sites in a number of states, so chances are small. But we still respond to it. We put our best foot forward and and hope that we gain their attention. Iowa State University College of Vet Medicine still having conversations with ECC Vet Med program and we'll see where that goes. Small Business Development Center, they have Iowa Falls State Bank sponsoring this, but I'll give you one of these. I'll give these to Angela as well to disseminate to anybody that she might know of. But they're gonna do kind of an introduction, Smart Start Class. And Smart Start Class is really a way to help budding entrepreneurs figure out, do I want to open my own business? So this is really an introduction to that. It's just gonna be a two hour session at Iowa Falls State Bank in their boardroom. I believe they're, they're actually serving some refreshments and so forth. It's on June 21st from 5:30 to 7:30. So, you know, they'll, they'll be talking to them all, and what does it take to start your business? How do you register a business? You know, what are your resources to conduct market research? What are the different types of business ownership, LLC, C corp, S corp, et cetera? What you do to create a business plan? What are you, what do you need to do to calculate your, your startup costs and make some projections? And, you know, if people are interested after that, then they can, you know, work with the SBDC and begin to develop that plan. So it's a, it's a really easy way introduction to figure out, is this only my own business for me? So if you know of anybody that is considering starting a business, or maybe they're running a business out of their garage or basement or small office in their house and they want to expand, this would be a great place for them to, to go and learn more about the resources that are available to them to help them get started. I guess just a quick update, the legislature of course is done and adjourned and they did pass a couple of childcare bills that are gonna be very helpful. They left a lot on the floor yet. So those are things that we'll pick up again next year and start forward and try and work with. They left Tiff alone, thank goodness. So we all still have that as an arsenal in our economic development toolbox to use to be able to help projects along. I, I did conduct a, I guess going back to kind of talking about the, the daycare. I did do a business visit with Wiggles and Giggles Daycare and things are going well there. She's just finished remodeling the last portion of her building, waiting for the fire marshal inspection. That'll put her up to capacity of eighty kids. She's already at sixty fives. She's had some good luck hiring staff recently. So that's, that's the issue for every business right now, is hiring enough people to fill out ships. So so things are going well there. Again, working my rag ride thing, working with Engineer Roll and City of Ackley and the City of Alden, just making sure they know or aware of potentially hazardous spots in the route that they need to address or should address. So that's it. Any questions?
There's a lot.
Well, yeah, so.
And Riverbend Rally coming up as well?
Yeah, I'm not involved with that. I mean, just it's going on outside my office. So I, I see the, the chaos and the mayhem that goes on to make that, to pull that event off. But yeah.
Excellent. All right.
Yeah, invite everybody to Iowa Falls for the Fourth of July, Riverbend Rally.
All right, well, thank you, Mark.
And if you have any questions, you want to discuss any of those projects further, you know, please don't hesitate to give me a call.
Or when somebody stop by and pick one of these up, you know, you got Riverbend Rally going on.
Yeah, I mean, I've got some at my office. They can stop at Iowa Falls State Bank. So either, either of those two places.
And it's this coming Monday.
Yeah, so it's gonna go right up. So again, if you know of anybody, please let them know.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. All right, Michael, I'm gonna go ahead and ask you to open the public comment line, please. All right.
Julie Dunn, I have a, I have a request. I request to be put on the agenda apparently for a further discussion of return of in-person attendance to Board of Supervisors meetings. So if you could put that on the agenda, that'd be great.
Thank you, Julie.
Will that happen or not?
Yes, yes, it will.
And will that be for next Wednesday?
Yes, it will.
Okay, thank you.
Angela, can you add that to the agenda for next week, please? Thank you. Other public comment this morning?
Yes, this is Pauline. I, I guess I have a few on that too with what Julie said. Since the courthouse is open, why aren't we having meetings that are open to the public? I mean, mask mandates have been lifted throughout the state. You know, everybody can go. They say there's no, if everybody's had their vaccinations, there's no need to do any of, of this anymore. So I guess why are we not opening up or why are you guys like not opening this up?
Okay, anything else, Pauline?
Yes, and then I do have, I am, which we kind of talked about a little bit, I am worried about the fireworks permit, one with the burning since we are so dry. I'm a little concerned with that. And then the appointment to fill the vacancy on the conservation board. Could you tell me a little bit about that? Is that a paid position or is that just being on part of the board or could you fill me in a little bit about that, what that is or?
Sure. Anything else before I respond? Okay, so a couple of weeks ago when we adopted the policy on opening courthouse and what would require an appointment, what would not require, we did in item number six, I'm just reading right from what was presented, public meetings will be available by Zoom and archived on YouTube. Meetings may be attended by the public if a person requests to be part of the published agenda. Meeting room occupancy will be maintained so that 15 square feet per occupant can be maintained per guidance. During the last 15 months, we have learned to embrace technology and found many means of practicing social distancing and safer health practices often lead to improved customer service, more effective customer encounters and improved security within the courthouse facility, within the Hardin County facilities. So just reading verbatim what was read two weeks ago. If, if you want to come in and, and be a part of a meeting, please let us know so we can make sure that there's adequate spacing here in the room for, for the public. The next thing on the fireworks permit, the, that's something that the board will have to consider and after talking to emergency management coordinator or director Creighton and supervisor Granzo, on the fireworks application, it says in bold right above the signature line, if your area is under burn ban on the planned date of your fireworks display, this permit is void. So I think that speaks for itself that even if this permit by Mr. Jensen is granted today and there's a burn ban in place, which there is, it would be null and void. In the event that we get substantial rain by July 5th and the burn ban is lifted, then the permit would be allowable and in, in place. The next thing with the conservation board, it's a volunteer position on the county conservation board unpaid. Sometimes a thankless job, oftentimes a very rewarding job because the decisions that board makes often leads to legacy decisions that impact Hardin County and the conservation efforts of the county for generations to come. So those applications were solicited like we do when we have openings at the beginning of a new calendar year or for appointment at the beginning of the new calendar year, but also when there is a vacancy. So that'll be filled. I know that Lance Renee and I have all been able to review the applications and so consideration of appointment to the vacancy will be done today later on the agenda, Pauline.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment this morning? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna go ahead and move to application for the fireworks permit. Submitted by John D. Jensen of 13929 Oo Avenue, Iowa Falls, 50126. He submitted an application for use on July 5th with the rain date on July 6th. He's completed the paperwork, but again, I want to reiterate that if the area, Hardin County is under the burn ban on the planned date of Mr. Jensen's fireworks display, this permit is void and he will not be allowed to utilize those fireworks. So I'd be open to any motions or any actions at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve the application.
Oh, second. And a motion of second, discussion. Again, if there's still a burn ban in place, Mr. Jensen will not be allowed to utilize the fireworks and hopefully in the meantime, we'll get plenty of rain and I hope Mr. Jensen will be able to utilize his fireworks. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries. Next item I have is an application for use of courthouse grounds for, from the Hardin County Historical Society. They've applied for a permit to display Fourth of July exhibit in the rotunda of the Hardin County Courthouse from June 28th to July 9th, 2021. There, they have had other displays here in the past and very interesting display, great historical information. And so the person applied for it was Barbara Reader. Reader, sorry.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the application for courthouse grounds for the Historical Society as presented.
Seconded.
I have a motion of second and discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries. Next, I have is consideration of applicants. Next I have is consideration of applicants to, for appointment to fill a vacancy on the County Conservation Board.
I will make a motion to appoint Brian Meintz to fill the vacancy on the Conservation Board.
I will second.
Okay, I have a motion of second, any discussion?
I think we had quite a few applicants. I don't want that to discourage other people from applying again.
Right. There were some very good applications.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries. Next we have is Recorder Cadner's monthly report.
Make a motion to approve the Recorder's report for the month of May.
I will second.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries. Next item I have is the Sheriff's Monthly Report.
I'll make a motion for Sheriff's Monthly Report.
I'll second it.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries. Next I have a change of status from the Harden County Conservation Department, Kate Miller being hired as intern for June, July and part of August at a rate of ten dollars an hour effective June ninth, twenty twenty-one.
Motion to approve.
I will second.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries. Next I have are two changes status from the Harden County Sheriff's Office.
Make a motion to approve the change of status for the hiring of Scott Bright as a correctional officer effective June thirteenth, twenty twenty-one as permanent part-time at eighteen thirty-five an hour.
Now I will second.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries.
And I'll also make a motion to approve the change of status for Michael Chapman, the correctional officer. He's going from full-time to part-time at, and will be paid at a rate of eighteen thirty-five an hour.
I will second.
I have a motion of second, any further discussion?
Effective July third.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries. Next item I have is approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two Harden County salary sheets, or salaries, excuse me. So this is standard human resource practice that we need to approve. So everybody has any changes that are effective with the new fiscal year, so they can be approved. As I recall, all of these were discussed during the budgeting process with department heads and elected officials. The only ones that aren't and have come to my attention would be those with the, the Central Iowa Community Services where the region gives a suggestion and pay. So I'm open to any discussion on the salaries being proposed today.
Well, with the central communications, I prefer just doing the two percent. Okay, if anything needs to change from there, we can do it as a change of status.
Okay.
I would go ahead and make a motion to approve the salary list with that change of that area being the two percent increase.
Okay.
Seconded.
Okay, I have a motion of second discussion with Central Iowa Community Services. I know that the region attempts to set for salaries. And while there's a notion that it's regional funds that are paying parts of the salaries, it's still taxpayer money. And so there's been a little bit of contention that the salaries need to be either regionalized as regional employees. And everything goes to a standard system with an entry level and a upper limit. And so as the Vice Chair of Central Iowa Community Services and soon to be Chair, we're looking at regionalizing the employees. So we have more standardized wages from county to county.
Sounds like a good idea.
And standard, standardized wages, benefits, everything. Everybody has something different in each county.
It is. And it, as we've had some matriculation in employees throughout the region. The insurance in, for example, Jasper County may be different than the insurance here in Harden County. So somebody that does a near similar job in Jasper County could look at Harden Counties and say, hey, I'm not, there, there's not equity. I won't use the word fairness, but equity in the insurance where somebody in Green County could say, hey, my vacationer accrual isn't the same as somebody working in Franklin County. And so I think to bring the equity there and to bring true continuity throughout the region, we've got to progress towards regional employees so that there aren't those differences in equity. So, okay. Any other discussion, Lance Renee? Okay, hearing none, roll call Angela.
Lance.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
B J.
Aye, motion carries. Other business, Lance?
None.
None? Renee?
Nothing.
Okay, I have nothing. I can ask for adjournment then.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries. Thank you.